The following program is sponsored by the Greek, Ely's Radio Shack Dealer, 570 Altman in downtown Ely, and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ely, Nevada. Ely City Council Meeting, March 25th, 2021.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America, a country we build for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have invitation from, that's welcome. Thank you, Mayor. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for your blessings upon our humble city of Ely. We thank you for the precipitation that we've had. We thank you for the low numbers of COVID that we've had. Lord, I thank you for those who are here that are concerned for the city to make the business run. Pray for a sense of justice and righteousness in the meeting tonight. We pray, pray for cooperation as, as there are different viewpoints, that everyone will be able to work together to reach mutual agreement. We pray, Lord, for an awareness of the needs of the community. We pray for wisdom in doing, knowing how to best meet the needs of this city. Lord, we thank you for all that, and we say this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. Thank you, Pastor. We have another one.
Mayor Robertson.
President.
Councilman Flankis.
Present.
Councilman Carson.
Here.
Councilman Spear.
Here.
Councilman Albert.
Present.
Councilwoman Beecher.
Here.
City Treasurer, HR Director Trask.
Here.
City Internment Welly.
Here.
City Fire Chief Stork.
Here.
Public Works Supervisor Frank Kraft.
Here.
And that's all.
Thank you. We'll move on to item two, public comment. Please state your name for the record, only three minutes.
Mr. Mayor, on your agenda, item B11, you're to consider possible action to city staff to respond to the paper in the counties regarding establishing mutual aid fire service agreements. That notion needs to be scrapped. Ely taxpayers may from the Ely Fire Department, whose concern should be the city of Ely. Ely taxpayers also pay with county coffers, the county fire stations and equipment. The county has mutual aid agreements with neighboring counties, and that is where it should stand and end. The Ely Fire Department is not a Nevada regional fire department. There are numerous other state and federal entities that address those issues. It's just that simple. Mr. Mayor, the planning commission city council today does not address the city's COVID violations by members of planning commissions while setting the city councilman. We need to comply. The city county codes table formulated and adopted are resigned and at a double standard. The city cannot selectively enforce the law under color law. You must stop the discrimination. Mr. Mayor, on the other question, the final approved city personnel manual, does approve that previous city councilman? How many times do I have to ask? Mr. Mayor, on the corner of Avenue Crawford, I told me a new meter box to pull in, eleven Avenue from the property line, and a couple of bores put into it, or next to it. I also reported that the corner of Avenue D11 Street, Redwood Way, as they call it now, you had an equipment put on, I have to be, the fire height is two feet outside of the curb and gutter, and when the new curb and gutter was put along Mr. Bassett's side yard, there were garage, he's another eight to 10 feet out. I want to remind you, Mr. Mayor, back when, quite some time ago, I got permission to put in the curb down the sidewalk in my parking at some 10 Avenue G, I did it in the city's direction, and many folks stood. You can't have it both ways, Mayor. First you tell me to do it, then you turn around, not you meaning you, but the city, and that means to stop, stop the discrimination. Mr. Mayor, relooking commission, I brought this item along in regards to keep Carson putting in traders in his, I mean, RVs in his trailer park on Morrison Avenue. We went from one to three, and now we're at four. Again, what, what did they put on the permit? You got, you had to set your trailer park, you got my lots that are empty, and yet you're allowing this. And elsewhere on the street, and she got RVs parked right next to homes. What do you put that's there, Mr. Mayor? On Avenue D, on one side, there's another, just across the street. People parking everywhere. No permit. I pay taxes. What do they pay for landfill? What do they pay for utilities? Why you shut me off and throws me out? That means you stop, Mayor, and you need to address it. Mr. Mayor, back in August 16, 2006, I had an individual, a friend of mine, going and supposed to take care of some weeds, and I was cited under your chapter three, I don't control. Now, essentially, you have horses across the street from me.
Thank you, George.
On another location, you have horses also.
That's your three minutes, George.
Why you understand, Mr. Mayor, you need to address that, and I want some answers.
Any other public comments?
No more speculative enforcing of the law.
Any other public comments? Hearing the same again, we'll move on to item three. Mayor's discussion for possible action, approval of agenda, including removal of agenda items. I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Spear, a second from Councilmember Albert. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing this order, we'll move on to item four, City Fire Report, Fire Chief.
The only thing I have to add, what an end, there's going to be, the April 1st, next Thursday, we're going to be doing a drive-through COVID vaccination out at the county fire station. Our staff can be assisting with it. For anybody 18 and older that doesn't get shot, we've got like 800 that's going to be available. So this is going to be open to the public, so they're trying to get the word out to everybody. So I got a flyer in the City Hall, they're supposed to try and get on the radio, or anything else. So if you guys know of anybody who, they need or want to get COVID shot, April 1st, and then the second one will be on April 29th.
What time is that going to start, Pat?
10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And they're going to have the paperwork will be on, I believe they have it uploaded on the company drugs website, so you can download the paperwork ahead of time, have it filled out, kind of streamline the process, and you get there. Any questions?
Eighteen and over.
Eighteen and up.
Can you provide a copy of that to the clerk so they can get that on, see if you have site?
Yep.
Police chief? He's here tonight. Municipal Court Judge, you have a report from them. They're in your pocket, City Attorney. Oh. Judge Costa, are you there?
Yeah.
We have the standard report in the supplemental materials. I have no comments on that, nothing unusual, but before I move on, do you have any questions on that?
No.
Okay, great. Then I just wanted to add that we successfully completed the budget process thanks to Jennifer Trask, the early footwork between our office and her, and that's behind us now. And we moved on to a project to look at some old restitution monies that the city is sitting on, some of which predate my time as judge, to see if we can find the claimants and see if the oldest monies need to be turned over to the state treasurer, because the parties are either deceased or not working. Just kind of a once-eat-your-exercise. And other than that, nothing to report, or any questions that I could answer?
You don't believe so? Thank you, Judge Costa.
Thank you.
City Attorney?
Nothing to report.
Okay. City Clerk?
Nothing to report.
City Treasurer?
Nothing.
City Public Works Supervisor?
No.
City Water Operator? City Engineer?
This, this will be quick, our big things are going on, it's obviously all the street project, and we also have our school project going up on Murray Street. Another major thing that we're working very diligently on this week is something that's later on this agenda with reporter stuff, so that's been a few times we've worked this week, so that's the main things that are going on. Any questions?
City Building Official, I believe there's any report there. We'll move on to item five, reports from the city council. Councilwoman Beecher.
Nothing to report.
Councilman Albert?
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Spears?
Anything to find?
Yeah, Councilman Carson?
No report.
Councilman Flank?
No.
Okay. For the mayor's report, we have my report there, and nothing in addition to that. We have a schedule for the hearing, so we will move on to item seven. Items for discussion, possible action only of the Ely City Council, consent agenda, we have minutes from February 25th, and bills from March 9th and March 19th.
Can I approve this attorney's petition?
Okay. I have a motion from Councilman Spear, right in the second.
I'll second.
Second from Councilman Carson. For the bill, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item through, Mayor Robertson, discussion for possible action, approval to donate $5,000 to the Nevada Rural County Surprise VDP Program Need for Services Provided to the City of Ely. Council may recall there was an ask from this organization last year for help purchasing a new van. Got to get some backup documentation there.
Mr. Mayor, did you know if they have any other entities contributing to this county or anybody?
I believe the county, the county does support this as well. And this program, as you can read in the back of the material, does support a lot of our senior citizens, and it does a lot to help alleviate some of the costs and responsibility with some of our more disadvantaged, and, what's the word I'm looking for? Can't remember. But some of our, our population groups that do need some of this stuff, which does help our community.
I would give caution to a brand.
I have a question to the Treasurer first. Is this budgeted, Treasurer?
No.
Did we swing it?
Were you able to see where that last donation came from?
I'm trying to do two of these.
You're wearing a lot of masks, though.
Are they with question in this period or for the future, maybe budgeting or not?
As I recall, this was about the same time they came last year for that.
And it was two, I found it, it was $2,000 that we gave them last COVID.
And that just came out of the general fund?
It did.
I think we could entertain either option, whether we do that now, or we'll put it in the budget for next, for after June. Either way, it goes to the same place and for the same cause.
I would prefer it to be budgeted and given later if we can.
Into what, next, next year's budget?
Yeah, next fiscal year's budget.
Could this ball me some of that FEMA grant?
At this time, I don't know for sure.
That's for having privileged families and all kinds of top of the list. Everything about that, but it's 27% of White Plains County is, is in seniors.
Yeah.
So, you know, maybe we need to look at that as well.
Thanks, Dave, Ron. If, if we do put it in the budget, we could still use that.
Yes.
Even if you go further, we could still use that down the road.
Good. I'll sign the Councilwoman Beecher motion with a stipulation that's in next fiscal, starting next fiscal year, July for, for the $5,000.
Yep.
With possible even FEMA deal.
Okay. So we have a motion from Councilwoman Beecher, second from Councilman Albert. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimous. Item four, Mayor Robertson, discussion for possible action, retroactive approval of updated priority list emailed from the Nevada Ely Cities and Municipalities, March 23rd, 2021, for conveyance to the state legislature and the United States Congressional delegations. This, we had to get this in by Tuesday last week, and Councilman Spear, Councilman Albert helped with that, but we had a deadline, we had to meet, so we're looking for retroactive approval or censure, and that needed to do it by noon, Council.
I would prefer.
We have a motion to ratify that. Go ahead, second.
I've got a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
On that third item, federal support for trades education, small businesses, startup, GMV trades, is this, I think Ernie might have mentioned that the deadline, is this for like a fellowship program?
It's for, it's for any of that, anything that will support the vocational education here in our community, whether that's electrician, construction, concrete mechanics, welders, if you want to get the education or start a small business, that whole sector, anything, like we discussed, is something that is that, so Councilman Albert is the force to go out and work as a data leader.
Right on. I'm learning a lot. You made the most of this. Your turn. Oh, I'll second.
Motion from Councilman Spear, second from Councilman Albert. Any further discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimous. Thank you. Item five, Councilman Flankis, discussion for possible action, approval of proclamation acknowledging March 25th, 2021, as the 200th anniversary of Greek Independence Day, in recognition of the Greek immigrants who helped build and develop White Plains County, as well as the United States of America.
I'll have, Mr. Mayor, I'll have David Miller go ahead and read the proclamation after all of tea, this is the one they introduce to the city.
Do you want to read it, David?
You can, you can read it, I can come speak afterwards if you'd like to read it, I appreciate it.
Proclamation declaring the 200-year anniversary of Greek Independence Day, whereas Greeks all over the world celebrate Greek Independence Day every year on March 25th, and whereas March 25th, 2021 will be the 200th year anniversary celebration of Greek independence, since the Greeks got their freedom from the Ottoman Turks in 1821, and whereas the early Greek immigrants that came to White Plains County came via the construction of the Nevada Underground as workers building the railroad, and whereas the July, August, and September 1906 payroll records show 117 Greeks working as predominantly section laborers on the railroad for $1.75 to $2.50 a day, whereas the September 29th, 1906, whereas on September 29th, 1906, when the railroad reached the Ely depot, the Greek laborers came into Ely to witness the celebration, whereas on December 7th, 1906, when ground was broken for the building of the smelter and the mill in the town of McGill, the Greek immigrants joined the workforce, where they worked nine-hour shifts and were paid $2.25 to $2.50 a day, whereas the 1907, in 1907, the Greeks working in the mines were earning $2.75 to $3.00 a day, and whereas in the 1910 census, there were 900, there were 696 Greeks living in White Plains County, where the majority were working as laborers in the smelter mill and the mines, and whereas some of the Greek immigrants became entrepreneurs and opened bakeries, general merchandise stores, barber shops, coffee houses, and butcher shops, and whereas the Greek immigrants lived, owned businesses, embraced their families in the communities of Kimberley, Greep Town, Old Ruth, McGill, Ely, and East Ely, and whereas the Greek families today continue to live in Ely and the surrounding communities, where they lived their lives with the customs their family members brought with them over 100 years ago from their mother country of Greece. Now therefore, I, Nathan Robertson, Mayor of the city of Ely, do hereby proclaim, Thursday, March 25th, 2021, assuming the council votes for that, as celebration of the 200-year anniversary of Greek independence, in the city of Ely, and we welcome all citizens of Ely and the surrounding communities to join in the 200-year anniversary of Greek Independence Day, and the celebration and remembrance of the Greek immigrants who lived and took part in the creation and development of our city and neighboring communities. With that, I will entertain a motion on this proclamation.
House Home Room.
Motion from Councilman Flankis, go ahead, a second.
I'll second that.
Second from Councilwoman Beecher. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimous. Thank you. Item five, Councilman Flankis, discussion for possible action, approval of proclamation acknowledging March 25th, 2021, as the 200th anniversary of Greek Independence Day, in recognition of the Greek immigrants who helped build and develop White Plains County, as well as the United States of America.
I'll have, Mr. Mayor, I'll have David Miller go ahead and read the proclamation after all of tea, this is the one they introduce to the city.
Do you want to read it, David?
You can, you can read it, I can come speak afterwards if you'd like to read it, I appreciate it.
Proclamation declaring the 200-year anniversary of Greek Independence Day, whereas Greeks all over the world celebrate Greek Independence Day every year on March 25th, and whereas March 25th, 2021 will be the 200th year anniversary celebration of Greek independence, since the Greeks got their freedom from the Ottoman Turks in 1821, and whereas the early Greek immigrants that came to White Plains County came via the construction of the Nevada Underground as workers building the railroad, and whereas the July, August, and September 1906 payroll records show 117 Greeks working as predominantly section laborers on the railroad for $1.75 to $2.50 a day, whereas the September 29th, 1906, whereas on September 29th, 1906, when the railroad reached the Ely depot, the Greek laborers came into Ely to witness the celebration, whereas on December 7th, 1906, when ground was broken for the building of the smelter and the mill in the town of McGill, the Greek immigrants joined the workforce, where they worked nine-hour shifts and were paid $2.25 to $2.50 a day, whereas the 1907, in 1907, the Greeks working in the mines were earning $2.75 to $3.00 a day, and whereas in the 1910 census, there were 900, there were 696 Greeks living in White Plains County, where the majority were working as laborers in the smelter mill and the mines, and whereas some of the Greek immigrants became entrepreneurs and opened bakeries, general merchandise stores, barber shops, coffee houses, and butcher shops, and whereas the Greek immigrants lived, owned businesses, embraced their families in the communities of Kimberley, Greep Town, Old Ruth, McGill, Ely, and East Ely, and whereas the Greek families today continue to live in Ely and the surrounding communities, where they lived their lives with the customs their family members brought with them over 100 years ago from their mother country of Greece. Now therefore, I, Nathan Robertson, Mayor of the city of Ely, do hereby proclaim, Thursday, March 25th, 2021, assuming the council votes for that, as celebration of the 200-year anniversary of Greek independence, in the city of Ely, and we welcome all citizens of Ely and the surrounding communities to join in the 200-year anniversary of Greek Independence Day, and the celebration and remembrance of the Greek immigrants who lived and took part in the creation and development of our city and neighboring communities. With that, I will entertain a motion on this proclamation.
House Home Room.
Motion from Councilman Flankis, go ahead, a second.
I'll second that.
Second from Councilwoman Beecher. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
With the council's support, unanimous, I will so proclaim, duly proclaim by the city of Ely, council this day of March 25th, 2021. Did you have some remarks to add?
Yeah, I would just like to thank the mayor and the council members, and, you know, as a part of the local Greek community growing up here, my brothers and I, we are second-generation American-born Greeks here in the US. Our children are third, and our grandchildren are fourth, and years back, most people remember, we used to celebrate Greek Independence Day around March 25th every year. We would have what we called Greek Magna Eia. We shared our Greek customs and enjoyment for art, what would be the equivalent to the American Fourth of July celebration, with food and dance and music, and now that there's only a few of us left, putting on that is very difficult to do, so it's kind of sad that we can't, kind of the conversation anymore, but we just wanted to recognize all the Greeks that came here, myself and other family members, and other old Greeks who've been following the Vicentino now for days, and there are a lot of places being lit up with Greek flags and blue and white lights, and the flags right now are flying in Carson City, and Washington DC, and Niagara Falls is being lit up, Australia's being lit up, LAX is being, so it's just really nice to see everybody celebrating Greek Christmas by September, so we just want to say, as our local Greek community, thank you guys for always, you know, being a part of us, and we can share who we are with you, so.
Well, thanks for bringing that up, Tim.
My problem. On signing the proclamation, does that come back to me, or how does that work?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, what, anybody have any questions?
Thanks. Thank you very much, Dave.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move on to item six, Councilman Spear, Councilman Albert, discussion on the update on Porter Group efforts on behalf of the city of Ely.
Let me start, Ed.
Okay, all, this is just a quick recap.
With the Porter Group, we had two meetings, Ed and I, and last meeting we had the city engineer BJ participate, we had the first meeting started on March 15th, we're having them every Monday at 9:00 AM upstairs in the mayor's office on Zoom. A quick recap, the American Rescue Plan, signed earlier into law review this year, allocated $350 billion to states, counties, and local governments, and the city of Ely was gracefully awarded $3,580,000 in total over two years under the American Rescue Plan. The funding will come from the US Treasury, and the city will get its allocation of $3,500, $3,580,000 in two equal payments of $1,790,000, they can not use the same dollar that day. And the next one will come here later. Inflation, you know, there's some rules we have to follow about all funding, having to receive the funding, the city will have until December 31st, 2024, to spend its allocation for the text of the American Rescue Plan, and that, and a lot of the city may use its allocation of funding to respond to public health emergencies, dealing with the COVID, 2019 COVID-19 economic impacts, including assistance to households, small business, nonprofits, or aid to impacted industries, to deter tourism, travel, and hospitality, to be used to respond to working, performing essential work during the COVID-19 public health emergency, and can be used also for non-entitled governments, which is what the city is, which means you're under 50,000 people. And one real important thing, I mean, there's a lot of, we have, it's going to be some more research on how this money's going to be spent, has to be spent following the rules. One really important item, and to make necessary investments in our water sewer and broadband infrastructure, so I believe the city can truly spend all the money. And then, we worked with the Porter Group, and it's so important to have them there in the White House there, we met with them on Monday and Wednesday, walking the halls of the White House, Senator Horace, Horace? Horaceford, he changed some of the rules on, the rules that we thought were right, so the Porter Group, Cameron, and the general, they notified us immediately, there's been a change in the direction we were headed, heading to, but for, that's using some of the other funding, you know, the 1.9 trillion, federal funding opportunities for the city's ongoing infrastructure, and we sent on the list, city of Ely prior to interest regarding funding, that were presented at the March 11 meeting. Item one was city of Ely's interest regarding funding, the Endo rehabilitation project, dealing with Main Street all the way through town, which includes the storm drain, infrastructure and more than making it, or it's going to really benefit, like Ed brought out in the meeting, it goes through and daylights out there, where Carson's field out in that area out there, it's going to eliminate a lot of flood zone areas there, that's real important. And so we move along with that, let's see here, again, you know, we, they meet constantly with Congressman Stephen Horaceford, Senator Catherine Cortez Masco, and Senator Jackie Roser, and so right now, the city and Porter are on track to submit this request by closing the business on Friday, April 2nd. Time is of the essence to get this stuff in, and a quick way, we want to beat the push, and have a Porter Group there, walking up and down the hallways, they meet with these people, pushing all the time. I mentioned the first project, which was Endo rehabilitation, the second, or, excuse me, the, the third one was water sewer infrastructure deal that BJ very well versed in. The third one was, we're pushing for a snipper, you know, and, and I'll just read a brief sentence, he said, Porter Group is engaging the city's federal legislatures to secure the support for this initiative, initiative by soliciting letters of support from their offices that will clearly explain by soliciting letters of support from their offices that will clearly explain the city's need for this funding to the Bureau of Land Management, which is the federal agency to seek the distribution of sniffle of funding. By securing this written support from the city's federal legislators, the city will be well positioned to receive this funding in a timely manner, and they may begin to utilize in their efforts to redesign Broadband Park, you know, we go through the local process. The one comment, and I believe Cameron and the General on the phone, and I, this was new to me, the Ely Airport COVID funding. Senator Cortez Masco's office informed the porter this week that the Ely Airport will be receiving nine thousand dollars of part of the loan from Airport Elite funding, signed into law in a stimulus package.